This party started right.
Good evening and welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of July 31st, 2023. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the Lincoln City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on items should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address, that you may be representing unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant then may make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, can you please start our meeting?
Also, as a reminder to those that are here to testify, the clerks will utilize a light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The monitors are available here up at the dais on both sides. Both podiums are available for testimony as well. The green light will start your testimony time. Your yellow light will indicate a one-minute time remaining, and the red will mean your stop time. First up on our council agenda today for Monday, July 31st, 2023, is our consent agenda, Sections 1 through 3.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak on the consent agenda items 1, 2, or 3?
I would like to speak to 1B, 23R-313.
Okay.
The public needs to know.
Could you please start with your name and address?
Jane Kinsey, Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government, and I don't give my address, but the city clerk has it. The public needs to know that the agencies that are nonprofit are receiving city taxpayer dollars. I don't think it's published widely, and they also run situations to make more money in their pockets. Center Point, Family Service, Family Violence Council, Friendship Home, Matt Talbot Kitchen and Outreach, Nebraska AIDS Project, Nebraska Apple Seed, Salvation Army, The Visionary Youth, and The Voices of Hope. Now, these agencies do good work, but people may have their own opinion about taxpayers providing money for them and then going on fundraising activities besides. In the interest of transparency, this is why Watch Dogs brings this up. The amount can be found on the website. I won't go through all of them, but Family Service and Friendship Home are the biggest recipients up in the $200,000 areas. We need more transparency in government.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on items 1, 2, or 3? Anyone else here to testify on items 1, 2, or 3? Seeing none, let's move forward.
We cannot vote on these items. Item 1A is reappointing Doug Crifels to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term to expire April 4th, 2026, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Doon, I missed you, I apologize.
I don't know who he is.
Mr. Crifels?
Right.
Did you, the agenda was published, let's see.
Received it last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. Didn't know if you had an opportunity to reach out to Doug at all if you wanted to?
I'd like to, yeah.
Okay. So traditionally, we will get appointments to boards. This is the Board of Mechanical Examiners. And usually each board will have a department liaison with that board. I don't know if L T U is this particular department's liaison department?
Or is it?
If I may.
Building and Safety.
Or it might be Building and Safety. Yes, please.
Yes, I think it's, I believe it is Building and Safety, and I would just add that because this is a reappointment, it's not the practice to have the person who's getting reappointed come to council.
Okay.
It's on the original appointments, so I just wanted to add that as well. And I do believe it's, this would be Building and Safety, I think.
Is Doug from Action Plumbing and Heating, do you know?
Very well, could be. Usually, so each one of these boards specifically may have certain requirements, especially the boards that require professional expertise will oftentimes have certain requirements, be it a plumber, an HVAC person, depending on the certain board.
Okay.
So if this is his area specialties, it very well could be.
Okay. I apologize for my questions.
No, not at all.
Just wanted more information. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we call the roll? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Doon?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 1B is approving the 2023-24 Joint Budget Committee Funding Recommendations, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Carlson, discussion. I would just like to note that the 2023-2024 Joint Budget Committee Funding Recommendations are actually outlined to specific programming that we ask these agencies to perform on behalf of the City of Lincoln because they are really quite well positioned to perform these services, these community services, better than, say, the City of Lincoln may be. And so that's why we partner with and fund certain programming through local nonprofits. Let's call the roll.
Weber?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Doon?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 2A is introduced by Shob?
So moved. Second. Second, Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Doon?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Item 2A is introduced by Shob?
So moved. Second. Second, Weber, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Doon?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall move on to Section 4, our public hearing liquor resolutions. I'll be calling item 4A and 4B together. Application of Midnight Mirage LLC, Nukemis as the Royal Grove, for a Class I liquor license located at 340 West Cornhusker Highway, and the related manager application of Violet Droll.
Hello, is there anyone here who would like to speak on item 4A?
Can you please raise your right hand?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you solemnly swear and affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
My name is Lindsay Schuler. I'm an attorney with Croker Huck Law Firm out of Omaha, Nebraska. The address is 2120 South 72nd Street, Suite 1200, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. And I am here representing Midnight Mirage LLC. Midnight Mirage and its members have submitted an application for a Class I liquor license for the real estate that is located at 370 West Cornhusker Highway, Lincoln, Nebraska, for the purpose of an entertainment and event venue. The real estate has been used as the Royal Grove for over a decade, and it was previously rented and managed by Hunky Dory LLC. The members of Midnight Mirage LLC have been working with Hunky Dory for the last couple of years. They have recently purchased its assets and taken over the tenancy for the property. Violet Raul is one of the members of Midnight Mirage LLC. She has submitted the application to serve as a manager under the liquor license. She has undergone several of the trainings for the, through the Liquor Commission for the position. She is currently enrolled and will attend the August 10 alcohol management training. And based on this, we would request that the Class I liquor license be approved. I would also like to note that the fire inspection did pass today, and the health inspection passed on July 20th, so if those items are missing, they should be submitted through the Liquor Commission very soon. And I guess if anybody has any questions as to location or is unfamiliar, all right. Assist me which button I'm pushing this. Oh, did that go?
You're good.
Okay. So the property in question is this one right here, right off of West Cornhusker Highway, and it has been there for quite some time. And then if, this will help jog your memory, that's what the building looks like currently. I think that image was as of last month through Google Images. And so at this time, we would open for questions if you have any, or more comments from anybody.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Councilwoman?
So the Midnight Mirage LLC, how do they intend to use the Royal Grove? Is it going to be regular scheduled concerts, or is it just events?
Yeah, so it will be semi-regularly scheduled because Midnight Mirage LLC does have its own production team, and so they do DJing and events for groups interspersed with that. Those regularly scheduled events, there will be other events such as, I know they're doing like a salsa night, they're doing dance classes, they're doing other musical events that they bring in. So while they were one of the production teams under the former owner, they are basically the former tenant, they are currently acting in that capacity, plus as manager and bringing in other groups as well for entertainment and events for the community.
Okay. And since they've been working with the former group, Hunky Dory, they're probably very familiar with the noise complaints that we've gotten historically on the Royal Grove, and so they'll know how to position the speakers to create less of a conflict.
Yes, that was, that was one of the things that they brought up to me when they first met with me, was that there have been former complaints, noise vehicles, et cetera. So we've talked about the parking situation and how to manage traffic in and out of that venue, but as well as try to make some events that have lesser noise too as well for the overall community, and work on soundproofing and things like that for upcoming events.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yes, Councilman.
Wish to make a comment because I've worked off duty up there years ago for Tommy Jelzma. So, and they used to hire actually an officer to patrol the neighborhood.
Yes.
To kind of cut down on the littering and trash and stuff like that, and that always had an effect. I can remember my first night out there when everything closed down, and Tommy came out and wanted to know why the cars were left in the parking lot, so. People didn't feel like driving that night, so.
Probably the safest option, right?
So.
And I believe, so like I've talked with the Midnight Mirage members, and one of the things that they're very keen on upgrading from the former tenant was security, both in the event venue and in the parking lot. And so I think that they will take your suggestion of neighborhood patrols also with high enthusiasm, because they do want to make sure that this is a safe event place and that people are not, you know, hot rodding in and out of there, and make sure that it is something that the neighborhood doesn't, you know, detest over time. They want it to be successful, but also a benefit to the community.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Not a problem.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
Madam Clerk, let's, oh, I think we're, is there anyone else here?
I think we're, I was gonna see if Mr. Parker had any comments. Okay, we're good.
Let me also make sure that there's no one else here who would like to testify on this item. Anyone else here who would like to testify on item 4A? Madam Clerk, did we call 4B at the same time?
I did read 4B.
4A or 4B? All right, seeing none.
Mr. Clerk, seeing no one else coming forward to comment on these two items, I'd like to move approval.
Second.
Second, Washington, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Doon?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. Item 5A is approving the interlocal agreements between the City of Lincoln and the cities of Bennett, Davie, Denton, Firth, Hallam, Hickman, Malcolm, Raymond, Sprogg, and Waverly for G I S addressing authority.
All right, is there anyone here to speak on item 5A? It looks like we have a continued public hearing from last meeting.
Yeah, Adam Miller, the G I S manager with the City of Lincoln and Information Services. Just wanted to thank you guys for taking the time to hear this resolution, and I'll remind you that last week, we had inadvertently left off R O C A, and just wanted to include them, give them a chance for a public hearing this week, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5A? All right, seeing none, let's move on.
Item 5B is approving the agreement between the city and Lincoln Public Schools for residential recyclables collection site.
Director Elliott?
Good evening, Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. This is an interlocal agreement that we, for the most part, have done, actually looking back, I think, since 1981. It's a collaboration with L P S to have a recyclable site on their location. Most of you probably know the Seacrest site. That's the agreement we have had for a number of decades. We are actually adding the Northwest High School to this agreement as well. So what we are doing will be adding a large recyclable collection site, just like Seacrest. It will have surveillance, it will have larger bins, more consistent bins, and because of the larger consistent bins, we've been able to get more competitive bids on our recycling services, so this has really been a benefit. Now we're just finally getting a large recycling site out in the northwest part of town, just like we've done in the other quadrants of town. So this is just solidifying that collaboration with L P S. It is a five-year agreement with four five-year renewals for a potential total of 25 years, pretty standard with interlocal agreements. But no, no financial exchange between L P S or the City of Lincoln, solid waste management, just a really great partnership with L P S, and we greatly appreciate their partnership on this, so.
All right, very good. Any questions at this point for Director Elliott? Yes, sir.
Hi, how are you? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Elliott, thank you for coming forward.
Yes.
This is exciting. A few years ago, we had to scale back the number of recyclables, and there were many questions from people in Northwest Lincoln about the travel time to do recycling.
Yes. So this is the final step in that consolidation piece. As you recall and pointed out, we didn't have a large recyclable site in the northwest part of town, so we have left four smaller sites throughout the northwest quadrant open and available while we were waiting for this school to be developed. Once this site is fully developed and operational, we will proceed with closing those other four sites. This one is much larger, it will be much more convenient to get in and out of for people going there, but also have that added protection with the surveillance, which we have found has greatly improved our other three sites. The surveillance has been very beneficial and helpful.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for Director Elliott? Councilwoman?
Director Elliott, thank you. I know it's been a long time for a Northwest, a large Northwest site, so I appreciate that. Because there was so much conversation around this area, I am curious what your plans are for communicating with the residents in Northwest Lincoln. Many of them are super attached to the sites that they go to today, and I'd just like to know that you're going to communicate a lot with them about this change well in advance.
As we learned a couple of years ago, when we started to roll out the consolidation of these sites, we learned that we are all very attached to our particular recycling drop-off sites. And so what we will do as we are implementing it, there's still some construction going on there, so we don't have the precise timeline of when it will be opened, but we will start to do some communications. It could be, we haven't completely worked out the plan, but it could be posting at the current site saying, hey, coming months, this is gonna, here's the plan and the timeline, social media posts. We don't necessarily have specific addresses of who attends all of these sites, so we can't send out a mailer or a door hanger, but we can start to put signs up, we can do social media posts, press releases, those types of things, as soon as we know a more solid timeframe for when it'll happen.
That will be great. I also, in reading through the agreement you have with L P S, noticed it was just saying multiple sites, so it's good to see here.
It's, it's a 25-year agreement, so we wanted to think on the horizon of what that could mean, but right now, for the foreseeable future, it is just Seacrest and Northwest High School, but 25 years and not wanting the headache of not being able to add or change. We, we did sites to cover that. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Elliott? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item 5B? Anyone else here for 5B? All right, seeing none, let's move on to 5C.
Item 5C is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July 1st through July 15th, 2023.
Is there anyone else, is there anyone here who would like to testify on item 5C? New impending claims. Anyone here to testify on 5C? Yes, Ms. Kinsey?
Jane Kinsey, Watch Dogs of Lincoln Government. Again, we have made comment about this before. Public vehicles seem to be causing accidents with the public. Somehow, the directors of these departments need to be on top of this and retrain or fire or come to some warning, written warning, to the people who are managing these vehicles. Does insurance pay this? Pay these claims?
We can, we can ask that question, Ms. Kinsey?
You can ask it. What do you mean? You have to find the answer?
I'll ask the city attorney here in just a moment when you're finished with your testimony.
Oh, okay. So, we would appreciate it as a taxpaying representative of those who do pay better oversight by the directors of these departments.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who would, else here who would like to testify on new impending claims, item 5C? All right, seeing none. Mr. Christie, would you like to come up here very briefly and explain the city's insurance program?
Yes, the, well, Hans Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. The, it depends, probably favorite lawyer answer, but generally speaking, the city is self-insured up to a certain amount. So I think it is fair to say, again, generally speaking, the answer would be yes, there would be insurance for most of the claims. Now, it depends on when it was filed, and there's other factors, but, so I would have to, you know, look at each individual claim, but again, the city does have insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. Appreciate that. Let's move on to 5C.
Item 5D. 5D is approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and Sam Sara, Inc., for the Automatic Vehicle Location System.
Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. This is A V L for our light fleet system. So right now, we have a current system on most of our L T U and building and safety vehicles, and this is just switching companies. We will be transitioning from our current company to Sam Sara. This is one that we will have installed on all of our light fleet vehicles across the entire department. This also includes building and safety and has the potential for other city departments to piggyback onto this contract if and when they would like to do so. This system does allow us to track where our vehicles are with GPS, and, but it also provides us some valuable information, so speeds, braking, climate initiatives such as CO2 emissions, those types of things, that we're able to run reports, answer questions. Sometimes we are able to answer if a constituent calls in and says, hey, there was something going on at my, in my neighborhood, I think city vehicles were there. We can go to this system, we can see if there was in fact a city vehicle there at that time, and then figure out what was going on in case of emergency situations. And we're all at the Lancaster County Emergency Operations Center, we can see all of our vehicles and figure out who to deploy.
Is there anyone here who would, else here who would like to testify on new impending claims, item five C? All right, seeing none. Mr. Christie, would you like to come up here very briefly and explain, um, the city's insurance program?
Uh, yes, uh, the, well, Hans Christie, City Attorney, 555 South 10th. Um, the, it, it depends. Um, probably favorite lawyer answer, but generally speaking, the city is self-insured up to a certain amount. Um, so I think it is fair to say, again, generally speaking, the answer would be yes. There would be insurance for, uh, most if, of the claims. Now, it depends on when it was filed and there's other factors. Um, but, um, so I, I would have to, you know, look at each individual claim. But again, the city does have insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Christie. Appreciate that. Let's move on to five C.
Uh, we're on item five D. Five D is approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and Samsara, Inc. for the auto, automatic vehicle location system.
Elizabeth Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation Utilities, 555 South 10th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. Um, this is, um, AVL for our light fleet system. So right now, we have a current system, uh, on most of our L T U and building and safety vehicles. And this is just switching companies. We will be transitioning from our current company to Samsara. This is one that we will have installed on all of our light fleet vehicles across the entire department. This also includes building and safety and has the potential for other city departments to piggyback onto this contract if and when they would like to do so. This system does allow us to track where our vehicles are with GPS and, but also provides us some valuable information. So speeds, braking, climate initiatives such as, um, uh, CO2 emissions, those types of things, that we're able to run reports, answer questions. Sometimes we are able to, um, answer if a constituent calls in and says, hey, there was something going on at my pla, in my neighborhood, I think city vehicles were there. We can go to this system, we can see if there was in fact a city vehicle there at that time and then figure out what was going on in case of emergency situations. And we're all at the, um, Lancaster County Emergency Operations Center. We can see all of our vehicles and figure out who to deploy to certain areas during the emergencies. Um, but also it does provide just good reliable data to help us reroute maybe some of our systems. If we can see there are three inspectors that keep visiting this one time of area during a day, we can reassess how we route people and assignments and issue assignments. So we're hoping that this will not only provide information that we can provide to the public, but also provide reliable effi, information that will allow us to be more efficient and track some of our climate action initiatives with our CO2 emissions. So really excited about this new system. It should have more capabilities than our current system. And this one, a, as I'm reading the resolution language, we probably could have worded it just a little bit better. This actually, the first term of this contract will expire March 26th, 2025. That's kind of year one. And then we do have the options to renew up to a total of five years. So the first, um, segment of this contract is actually just about a year and a half, not five years as it, it appears in the resolution document. So that's the only clarification I would make.
All right, very good. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it. Councilman Duden.
What does it cost?
This one is, and actually, I think I have Patrick, if he knows the cost of, off the top of his head. I should have had that right here. Mine's...
Patrick Minar, Technology Services Direct, uh, Manager for L T U, uh, 949 West Bond Street. Uh, the cost for the first year is 151,000. Uh, years two through four are gonna be 101,000. For reference, our current agreement with our current vendor is actually 115,000 per year, so we're actually be saving money going to the new system.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on item five D?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. So, um, is this going to be a surveillance system, uh, all during working hours so they can see if there's an accident?
We can, Director, Director Elliott just explained what the system is, but we can ask that question again?
Okay. Well, then if I have to, uh, just make my one statement, I will go ahead. I thought we would have a, um, give and take during the five minutes, but apparently not. Um, this is ridiculous. Even if there is insurance, the, um, people need to be monitored more directly. It's real easy to spend taxpayers' money and put in systems and then not follow through with, um, making changes and protecting the public, not only from accidents, but from the taxpayers' money. So we'll hope that the, um, pending claims against the city will reduce as a result of this. Uh, we can look at it for one year and see if it will be, um, less.
Very good. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item five D? Very good. Director Elliott, may I ask you a quick question, please? Or perhaps your colleague?
Yes.
Um, will the system help identify an accident per se or simply just record data around a specific incident if need be?
Uh, this will actually provide us information that will help with either accident investigations or, um, determining near faults, those types of things. So this would allow us, if there was an accident, let's say 13th and A, let's just say hypothetically, we would be able to go there, we would be able to see what that operator's, uh, speed was, when braking or any other, um, kind of basic information. Use that then could go to the city attorney's office to, uh, assess and determine any, uh, responsibility on certain claims or accidents. Um, it, currently our system, it's not as robust as this one that we are getting. We, and it's not on all of our vehicles, it's probably on about 80% of our vehicles. We do that now, if, if it happens to be a vehicle that does, i- is outfitted with the AVL system. So that is some information we have currently.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman.
Um, I, I'm curious, is this, uh, AVL system only for L T U vehicles or for all city vehicles?
It, right now, it's primarily L T U and building and safety because we're the ones that are using the current system. However, other directors have expressed an interest. So this contract is written for other departments to also purchase off of or, um, subscribe to essentially as well. So it is one that can be utilized by the entire city.
Very good. Councilman, Councilman, yes.
Yeah, I'll just mention that, uh, I know law enforcement uses something similar to this, so.
Yep.
It's on their vehicles.
Right. And I should say, at the current cost that we have, that is just for what is already existing on our current system. I believe, um, in the contract, there is some additional fees for any others that we add during the, the term of the contract. So there would be additional costs if we added more vehicles, but the capacity and ability to do so is included in the contract.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Madam Clerk, let's move on to five E.
Item five E is approval of amendment number one of the annexation agreement for North Bank Junction between the city, Roger H. Schweizo, trustee of the Roger H. Schweizo Revocable Trust, Aldana Schweizo, trustee of the Aldana Schweizo Revocable Trust, and HH Development.
Is there anyone here to speak on item five E?
Good evening, Abby Latrell, Law Department, 555 South 10th Street. Um, and I just noted that while the resolution is on your agenda, it does not look like the agreement itself was uploaded. So I assume you have not received that to review?
No, ma'am, I don't believe so.
Okay, so, um, I guess I'd request a deferral for one week so you can review the agreement before you approve it.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, very good. Let's go. Is there anyone else here, by the way, who would like to speak on five E since we have it on today's agenda? Okay, very good. Let's go ahead and move on to our voting session.
Item five A is approving the interlocal agreements between the city of Lincoln and the cities of Bennett, Davie, Denton, Firth, Hallam, Hickman, Nakem, Raymond, Sprague, and Waverly for the G I S addressing authority introduced by Washington.
So moved.
Second? Second, Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
I have, would like...
I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, Councilwoman Washington?
Yes, thank you, Ma, uh, Mr. Chairman. I would like to ask for a motion to amend number one for this item, adding the Village of Roca to the list of communities that will provide G I S, uh, addressing to, or with.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Is there a second? Second. Second, Weber? Very good, let's call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
Any comments on the main motion before we call that? All right, seeing none, please call the main motion.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five B is approving the agreement between the city and Lincoln Public Schools for residential recyclables collection site, introduced by Bowers.
So moved.
Oh, I'm, excuse me, correct myself, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second? Second, Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried five one. Item five C, accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for July 1st through July 15th, 2023, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second? Second, Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. Item five D is approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and Samsara, Inc. for the automatic vehicle location system, introduced by Weber.
So moved.
Second? Second, Carlson, discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Duden?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried five one. Item five E is approval of amendment number one of the annexation agreement for North Bank Junction between the city, Roger H. Schweizo, trustee of the Roger H. Schweizo Revocable Trust, and Aldana Schweizo, trustee of Aldana Schweizo Revocable Trust, HH Development. Introduced by Weber.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second, Washington? Um, and I would move to delay this for one additional week.
With continued public hearing?
With continued public hearing.
I'll second that again.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's vote on the delay of one week.
Duden?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero. That concludes our section five, public hearing resolutions. We'll shall move on to section six, our public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. Item six A, this change of zone 23053, application of Riga Engineering, to change from R2 Residential District to B1 Local Business District on property generally located at 2211 Winthrop Road.
Is there anyone here to speak on item six A? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. David Weeby, Architectural Design Associates, 3410 O Street. Um, here representing the owners, Cooper and Company. Uh, they initially bought half of this building, did so well, they expanded into the north half. And now are running out of room to store materials, furniture, and supplies that they distribute. Um, we're asking for a change of zone on the small area behind the building, um, right here, the, to align with the, with the zoning line that extends from the north. Uh, this will allow us to add a stockroom warehouse space, um, so that they can, um, accommodate their business.
All right, very good. Thank you. Uh, any questions for the applicant? Yes, Councilwoman.
Uh, I just had one question about current zoning. Um, I can see very clearly that it's B1 along the Winthrop, uh, frontage. And I'm, uh, if you could please show me where B1 extends?
Certainly. It runs al, well, I'm sorry, it runs along this line, up adjacent to the building, across, and then extends further north, I believe, to South Street.
Okay, so, oops, excuse me, so behind the building or west of the building, if I were coming down that bright white line, that is R2?
Correct.
Okay, so part of the parking lot is already in R2?
Correct. And there's actually a special permit that covers the use of that parking lot in R2.
Right, as, yeah, uh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for the applicant? Okay, it's always exciting when a business needs expansion. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item six A?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. Uh, how do the people, residents and the other businesses feel about this expansion? Um, he didn't mention anything about talking to them about it. So I think we need to have it on the record whether he has done that, his company has done that, Cooper has done that, where that stands at this point.
Very good. Is there anyone else here who would like to testify on item six A? If Director Kerry's in back, I would ask him to come forward. If there is anyone else here who would like to testify on item six A? All right, very good. Thank you. Director Kerry, welcome. Could you explain for us, Director Kerry, the notification process, um, when we go, when an applicant goes through a change of zone request with the city of Lincoln?
Sure, I can do that. Uh, David Kerry, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Um, so this is a change of zone and any change of zone, we, uh, notify property owners within 200 feet of the affected property. So that notification did go out to all property owners within that distance. Um, and that is our standard of what we do for all changes of zone. This also went to, uh, the Planning Commission, and so this was on the July 12th Planning Commission hearing date. Uh, because, uh, this was non-controversial and did not receive any comment, it's, it was put on and stayed on the consent agenda. And it was voted on by the, uh, Planning Commission on a, uh, six to zero vote, I believe, um, at the July 12th hearing. Uh, and then obviously, change of zone comes to the city council for your consideration. Um, we still have not received any comments on this, uh, at this point. So it did have an opportunity for comment. Uh, this is somewhat typical on some of these type of straightforward type of changes of zone, um, and that we don't receive comment, and that's the case in this, this one.
Very good. Thank you, Director Kerry. Any questions for Director Kerry? Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Is there anyone else? No, I'm sorry, I would think we've already gone down that route. Let's go ahead and move on, Madam Clerk.
Um,
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Um, Chair, if I could ask, um, would the applicant, um, like to come forward for a rebuttal or to discuss anything that they may have done talking to neighbors, if you know?
Well, this will be short. Um, personally, I've not talked with the neighbors, um, other than the public notices that have been sent out. Uh, that's what I'm aware of.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward.
That concludes section six of our agenda on public hearing ordinances, second reading and related resolutions. We'll move on to section seven, which is resolutions first readings, our items seven A through seven E. Ordances, uh, section eight are ordinances first reading and related resolutions, our items eight A through eight J. Section nine is our pending list date certain, is item nine A. And section 10 is pending list, items 10 A through 10 C.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate that. Tonight is public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on today's agenda nor plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time. Is there anyone here who would like to, uh, address the council during our public comment session? Yes, Ms. Kinsey?
Jane Kinsey with Watch Dogs. I would like to address, uh, the leaders in Lincoln, Nebraska about transparency and listening to public, the public. It looks like, uh, unless a person reads through, they're not able to know exactly about what items, the length, the width, the aspect of the items that are on the agenda. So, um, the police chief leaves for no reason to the public. This is not transparency. Yet the mayor and the council give no word or reason to the public. We're very sure that those entities know the reason, but no one has made any announcement. Now, they could say, oh, this is a personnel matter, and so we can't discuss it. But that can be waived if it's desired by the authorities. Many city councils speak to express to the public about some events such as these, but there's been no peep from any council member. We can say that Theresa Ewens was a poor choice from the start. Lincoln does not any outside influence on our legal authority positions. Even more, some woke influence from outside of the state. We ask that you keep this in mind when a new police chief is chosen or interviewed. We ask that you keep this in mind when a new police chief is chosen or interviewed. As a representative of the neighborhood watch in my area, southeast Lincoln areas have been going downhill. We used to have meetings of the neighborhood watch, we used to have neighborhood night out where the members of that team could come and talk to us, and we could ask questions so that we would even know a person in a public meeting. This is not what's happening. So the response to people who have concerns at the city council meetings, there is an appearance that once council members are elected, each one or the group could care less about what issues are raised at a meeting, or the members of the public who appear. There's a widespread belief that the council will follow the mayor, the planning commission, and what developers want. This is a waste of the breath for the citizens to question what is presented on the weekly agenda. We strongly want to remind you that Lincoln is a democracy, and your desire to silence citizens by aligning yourselves with the bureaucracy is not part of the function of democracy. We ask that you turn over a new leaf and listen to the public when they come forth to speak to you about items. The only time that I can remember in many years of standing before city council is when there are a hundred or however many people are legally allowed in this forum, and they stand up and they make a wave, do they get any response? This is not right. It's discouraging to the public to speak, and it really looks like the whole city's run by the planning council. They make up their mind, people speak up there, and then they bring it to the city council, and it's overwhelmed, their ideas are overwhelmed. Now, I can sympathize with the idea that there are people who make trouble, but when this happens over and over by taxpaying, upstanding citizens, it gets to be a habit.
Ms. Kinsey, we're at the five-minute mark, if you would like to please finish your comments.
Okay. So anyway, I ask that the new members make some reconsideration of this behavior and that we can have a new leaf in the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the council during public comment? All right, I would just like to state that, a reminder that tomorrow, we will have free community events celebrating National Night Out, which promotes police and community partnerships and neighborhood awareness. You will see those events occurring at the F Street Community Center, Calvert Recreation Center, Air Park Community Center, and Arnold Heights Pool. So just as a reminder to folks.
Yes. A little comment, I'd like to make a comment too on the last speaker that was up here, because most of us up here, I'm sure, respond to phone calls from the public when they call us, respond to emails when they email us, sometimes I even get text messages from constituents. I'm planning to do a town hall meeting every third Wednesday of the month at the Charles Gear Library at fifty-six and Normal, and anybody can come to that location and voice complaints or concerns or express how they feel about any kind of an issue. And I'm sure some of the other council members have some other venues that they use for contacting their constituents. And so, yes, I am newly elected, and I've been up here for, this will be my second month, and I've learned a lot, I have a lot to learn, but I plan on serving the people of southeast Lincoln to the best of my ability, so, in my district. And I'll help anybody else in any other district as well, so that's how I feel on that issue.
All right, very good, thank you, I would entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, are you ready, would you like to speak during open microphone?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say this much, for you new people that don't know who I am, my name is Pat Scherz, and a lot of the time, I just sit here and listen, so I don't speak very much, but I want my city council representative, plus anyone else that's new, to get to know that I'm here to just listen, learn, once in a while I will speak, but that's mainly what I do, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second, Washington, please call the roll.
Duden?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Motion carried six zero.
We are adjourned. Strong.[1319.12]